I'm in my Sear Center today.
Yeah.
So it's like...
Hi, good morning and welcome to the August 21st, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer for Sedgwick County. This morning, I'd like to invite up our County Treasurer, Linda Gesire, to talk about some new license plates that you can put on your tag, or excuse me, can put on your vehicles.
Morning Linda.
Good morning. Thank you Kate. We got several new tags this year, and I'll gladly show these off. Thank you to all our military people for their service. A lot of these will pertain to you. This is a Veteran of the Korean War plate. It requires your DD 214. There's a 50 cent plate fee with it. It's also available in motorcycle. We have a Veteran of Iraqi Freedom, 50 cent plate fee, DD 214 is required. Also available in motorcycle as well as standard. We have Operation Desert Storm plate, 50 cent plate fee, DD 214, also available in motorcycle. We have a Veteran of Enduring, Operation Freedom, 50 cent plate fee, DD 214 required, also has a motorcycle. We also have the Kansas Special Olympics, which is a $40 annual fee that goes to Special Olympics. It's a 45-50 plate fee, one-time fee, but the $40 is annually. It's also available in motorcycle. We have an Autism Awareness Plate, a $40 annual fee, 45-50 plate fee, one-time. For the 4H people, we have a 4H plate, has a $50 annual fee and a 45-50 plate fee. David Spears, this one specifically for you, they added rock chalk to the bottom of your KU plate.
Ooh.
It has a $50 annual fee and a 45-50 plate fee. Prior to this, your rock chalk was not on there. It is now.
It's about time.
They did that just for you, I'm sure. Emporia State University's plate's got a little new logo. Their little hornet's gone, they just put the E on there. It's a $35 annual fee and a 45-50 plate fee. And then, of course, the Wichita Flag Plate, which has been very successful. I know Commissioner Meitzner was on the council when they were visiting with us about getting this plate going, and it has a $50 annual fee and a 45-50 plate fee. And we still have in the works, the Boy Scouts of America Plate, the Choose Life Plate, the Alzheimer's Association Plate, and Helping Schools Plate. And if any of you are wanting to get a current personalized tag, you have until Friday to order. They are going to issue a new series of your personalized vanity plates in 2020. That's all I've got.
Very good. Well, we appreciate you bringing that up to us. Since they can print these very easily now, I have one request.
Yes, sir.
On my Veterans Plate.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to have a nice US Air Force logo on there instead of this little thing I pay a dollar for that says US Air Force. I want Air Force logo.
We're gonna have to get the legislature to let us do that.
All right, well, we'll work on that. The other thing is that the new plates, I know that they saved the state money, but as a guy that collects classic cars, classic plates are part of the collection, and these are never gonna be classic, so I feel sad in what we're changing.
That's true. They're just a flat plate with just this put on top of them, so.
Anyway, I don't see any other questions. Thanks for coming and telling us about it.
Alrighty. Thank you. Have a good day.
All right, moving on with some more fun. We have some special guests in our audience this morning who would like to recognize a few of our employees for a recent project to support McConnell Air Force Base. So, Mr. McKay, I will hand the podium over to you if you'll introduce your guests and talk about this project.
Good morning, Mr. McKay, and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
I'm Michael McKay. I'm a Civil Engineer at McConnell Air Force Base. Joining me today, Major Watson, Pilot with Wing Safety of the 931st. Major Fisher, Pilot Director of Operations. Captain Shirey is a Pilot with Flight Safety. Master Sergeant Southerly, also with Wing Safety. Mr. Truyn, who's our contractor to help us on bird airstrike issues, works with the US Department of Agriculture. Mr. Robert Hughes, who's Airfield Manager. And we're here today to recognize David Spears and Scott Lindaback. We had a very wet spring, and when the water flows down those runways and comes out the drainage pipes, it scours out a large area which holds water, and then it holds fish, which are at the bottom of the food chain, and of course, the big predators come there to eat the fish. And we had a very severe bird strike earlier this summer involving one of our transient aircraft. Struck a great blue heron, which is a very large, kind of resembles a small pterodactyl, actually. So, since part of that drainage is on McConnell's property and part of it is actually on the county property, I called David Spears, and he sent his Drainage Engineer, Mr. Scott Lindaback, out to meet with us and helped us assess it. And then he subsequently met with our Bird Hazard Working Group chaired quarterly by our Vice Wing Commander, Colonel Barron. We certainly appreciate David and Scott helping us out and giving us recommendations and giving us access to that area. So, the other issue we spoke about with some of the Commissioners today is one involving items J and K on your agenda, which is solar arrays, because solar arrays have the potential for reflecting sunlight and affecting the pilot's vision. And what I'd like to first of all say, that McConnell does not oppose solar arrays. Renewable energy is a wonderful idea, but in the past, I've been here several times and the Sedgwick County Commission has adopted lots of legislation to prevent incompatible development from encroaching upon McConnell and adversely impacting our future mission viability. So, before any solar arrays are built near the base, continue doing what you're currently doing. And it tells me that you guys have done your homework, because that's buried deep in the air installation compatible use zone study, and you're on point to find that and to recognize that as a potential hazard. So, even though I'm here to thank David and Scott, I'd like to extend our gratitude to the Metropolitan Area Planning Department and to Public Works. Any questions you may have, please, I've got all these subject matter experts here. Everybody from Pilots, Airfield Managers, to Safety, open up your questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have a question so much, but more of a comment. First of all, I'd say, Mr. McKay, you've been a pleasure to work with, and I thank you for your thinking of us and calling us on issues that we can help with. I would just say, generally speaking, that Sedgwick County, we care deeply for McConnell Air Force Base and our military personnel across this community. You have a huge impact in our community. We love what you provide. We love your mission, and the fact we have a good relationship, to me, is wonderful. And I want to say thank you for what you provide, and we had a tremendous meeting this morning, talked about solar array panels, and my concerns were alleviated somewhat, because I think that we have a good language. Our Planning Department did a good job, and, but having that conversation was important, because if there was any deficiencies in the policy we're gonna consider today, we would want to know that before we move forward, because your mission is that important to us. And so, I want to say, you know, I did have, just, this is a number we talk about every once in a while, so I want to give you a new number that was provided just last year, but McConnell Air Force Base now has a total economic impact in the 50-mile radius surrounding the base of $617.2 million now. So, it has increased, and so, the impact that you have on our community financially is incredible. We have relationships with many people there. There's thousands of people involved in their careers. They touch the base in one way or the other, and so, the impact we have personally and financially, not to mention that the mission that you guys have, to protect freedom and provide for our security in this nation, is just wonderful to us. I want to say, thank you for all you do, and the fact that we have a good relationship is everything to us. But I do want to reflect a little bit on David Spears and Scott Lindaback as well. The fact is, they didn't contact Commissioners, they didn't have deep discussions about what should happen. They just do their job, and they do it autonomously. They do an excellent job. They have great judgment and a great response. They know the importance of McConnell Air Force Base, but even if it wasn't McConnell, they have the same great response to anybody in this community. And I want to say, I've told everybody, Scott's worth his weight in gold, and I mean that. He is an expert among experts. He understands water and the issues around water unlike almost anybody else I know. And so, the fact that he gets involved and solves problems and does it without this type of recognition normally, it just speaks of his character, and I'm so proud of him and proud of David Spears for what they do. And we received this good news story, because you, Mr. McKay, were very generous in letting us know that the county did a good thing, and so you brought this to our attention, which is why we're here today. I want to say thank you for recognizing the excellence, and I want to say thank you to our staff that leaned forward and did a tremendous job in this case, as they always do. And with that, I'll just leave with, I think I've said too much already, but I want to say thank you once again.
Well, thank you, Jim. We appreciate that. And military installations across the nation are envious of the relationship McConnell has with our local communities and our government officials. They wish they had that, and if they did, they'd be the best Air Force Base in the country, but you guys own that. You, the City of Wichita, City of Derby, Public Works, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Department are a big part of our success, and we're proud to be here in south-central Kansas.
Awesome. And it's in my district, by the way.
David Spears.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. David Spears, Director of Public Works. We all know the tremendous value that McConnell gives this entire community, and so it's pretty well a no-brainer that we're gonna do everything we can to help them. And I just want to compliment Scott, say a few words about him. This has probably been our busiest year ever as far as drainage problems. We've had them all over the county. We especially have them down in Commissioner O'Donnell's district and Commissioner Howell's district, but there's been others in other parts. Scott works many hours a day. He puts out a lot of emails to me. He helps people, so it's just like Commissioner Howell said, there's just lots of things he does. We give the same effort to everybody that we've given to McConnell. And then I just also want to say, we have a lot of other good folks down at Public Works that work just as hard and not always recognized. I try to recognize them, but it doesn't always come to the forefront, but just wanted to let you know that. And anyway, we were glad to do this. We're still working on it. We gotta get a permit, and got some wildlife in there, but we are on it, and we'll get it taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it.
Scott, here. No, there he is. Scott.
God, thank you so much. Appreciate everything you've done for us. Thank you.
Chief of Safety, I would like to recognize both of you guys in the same kind of way. Thank you very much for putting names to the great relationship that we have between Team McConnell and the city and the county of Sedgwick. It's hard to find good neighbors, right? In this life, the life of McConnell at least, we have some really good neighbors, and now today, we get to put names to just the great relationship that we have. And as Chief of Safety, as a reservist, I'm here for the rest of my career. So, I will be flying in and out of here, and so it is very near and dear to me that these issues get fixed and that you guys, that we have a good relationship in any ways here. That's very nice. It's a coin. If you guys, you know, do you know the history of the coin?
No.
So, if you show up at any kind of a location somewhere in town, and you see some guys that are in the airports, you can present your coin to show them that, yes, I am a part of the crew, a part of the clan, if you will. If they do not present theirs with you, they might owe you a beverage of your choice. Okay? So, keep that on you. See, that's okay, because you're in a situation that might garner you a beverage, okay? Anyways, thanks again.
Thank you.
Yeah. That's great.
All right, and one final announcement. Tickets are available now for Wichita's Wildest fundraiser. This year's Zuba Lee is Saturday, September 7th. Tickets are available by, through any board member and through, like Chairman Dennis, Mr. Stoltz. Tickets are available through any board member or online at the zoo's website, www.scz.org. On the agenda this morning, Commissioners, we have meeting minutes, proclamations, and appointments. You'll have a grant for the Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. There's two items, like we've said, related to renewable energy systems. Following that, we have a resolution regarding a Board of Appeals makeup, and then we have a report from Interest Bank Arena, a quarterly financial report. You'll consider some legislative issues for the Kansas Association of Counties, and then we have a report of the Board of Bids and Contracts. We'll wrap up this morning with the Fire District meeting. So Chairman, I will let you get down to business.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. First of all, let me express my gratitude for the folks that came in to visit us today from McConnell. You have a very vital mission. We don't have global reach without air refueling, and you all are the ones that provide that global reach for the United States Air Force and for our allies and for these other services that we talk about once in a while. I appreciate what you do each and every day. We did have a short meeting before this meeting today, and I would thank them very much for their service to our community. I did let them know that I was a Chief of Safety at one point in my life, so I understood what they're doing each and every day, and I thank them. So, I understand we pretty well worked out the details of some of the items coming up on our agenda later on today. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to, so I just want to make sure that you understood that. Also, I want to welcome all of those folks that are joining us in the audience today and those that are joining us online and on KPTS. With that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for August 21st, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Cruz.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Meitzner.
President.
Chairman Dennis.
President.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda, but if anyone would like to speak at this time, I'll give you an opportunity. Seeing no one, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of July 24th, 2019.
Commissioners, everyone has a reviewed, had an opportunity, actually, to review the minutes from July the 24th and from our special meeting on August 5th. Move to approve both items.
Second.
We have motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Centennial Celebration of the 19th Amendment and League of Women Voters Tribute Day.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Cruz to read the proclamation for us this morning.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas the first local League of Women Voters in the United States was founded in Wichita, Kansas, on June 10th, 1919, and whereas Wichita is proud to be the home of the first National League of Women Voters Chairwoman Jane Brooks, and whereas the League of Women Voters Wichita Metro is celebrating 100 years of continued voter service and women's rights advocacy by hosting the Centennial Luncheon on August 24th, 2019, initiating a year-long commemoration of women's suffrage and accomplishment. And whereas, in conjunction with the local League of Women Voters nationwide, the League of Women Voters Wichita Metro is celebrating the Centennial Celebration of the 19th Amendment through the year, throughout the year, with exhibits, luncheons, symposiums, parades, and rallies. Now, therefore be it resolved that Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 24th, 2019, as the Centennial Celebration of the 19th Amendment of the League of Women Voters Tribute Day, and encourage all citizens to participate in the celebratory and educational events in the coming year. I adopt, I make a motion, we adopt the proclamation.
Thank you. Second. We have two seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And I do believe we have Pat Reinhold, Co-President of the League of Women Voters, and Sharon Cranford, the Centennial Committee Chair, here to accept the proclamation.
Hi, I would like to thank Commissioner Cruz and the Commission for this great honor. The local League of Women Voters is the only league in southeast Kansas. We have members across Sedgwick County and beyond. We are nonpartisan, we are nonprofit, we welcome men to join. I just want to point out that the right for women to vote is not a woman's issue. It affects all of us, and it is something that we all need to celebrate, and I welcome everyone to join us. We have centennial activities planned throughout Wichita, across the county, for the next year. So, I welcome everybody to learn about this history and join us in the celebration, and thank you for this honor. And I brought some centennial badges. I'll just bring them up here. You can pass them down.
And you want to just talk briefly about the event this weekend? I'm taking, I'm taking three, because I have two little daughters. So, one for myself and one for them.
And we've got more. We're having a kickoff luncheon this Saturday for the statewide event. We have Senator Nancy Cassibon Baker coming. We have our National League President coming. We have a lot of other government people coming. And this event, to my astonishment, sold out two months ahead of time.
Wow.
So, I can't invite any of you to that, but there's a lot of other things coming up. We're gonna have a traveling exhibit that will be in local libraries across the county and across the state, as well as many, many events. So, it's a big year, but it's, the fight for voting rights is ongoing, and I know that the members of the Commission are very adamant in making sure that everyone who is able to vote can vote. I've been to the canvases. I'm impressed by the dedication that you have to protecting voting rights, and that is also our mission. Thank you.
I want to thank you very much for being here today, and we appreciate being part of the celebration. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring Adinkra Henny Journey to Greatness Cultural Awareness Program Celebration Day.
I've asked Commissioner Cruz to read this proclamation.
Whereas Umbuntu Village Saturday School is a grassroots community education initiative which emerged out of a common desire to design and create supplemental education programming for the community. Through strategic partnerships, Umbuntu Village School facilitates an enriching culturally appropriate and positive learning experience designed to enhance students' personal, social, and academic outcomes. And whereas, the Adinkra Henny Journey to Greatness Cultural Awareness Program is a collaboration between the Holy Savior Catholic Academy and the Kansas African-American Museum to expand educational and cultural awareness for students. And whereas, this framework will result in curricular activities and self-discovery of each individual's greatness and the beauty of cultural enrichment through African and African-American art, music, history, and language. And whereas, this collaborative effort will engage African-American and other diverse learners in discovering and manifesting their greatness by impacting the community and society beyond. Now, therefore it be it resolved that Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 24th, 2019, as Adinkra Henny Journey to the Greatest Cultural Awareness Program Celebration Day, and ask that the citizens of Sedgwick County to join in the mission to discover the historical significance of African-Americans and African of the...
Diaspora.
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 Diaspora. Okay, thank you. So sorry about that. Okay, so I make a motion that we adopt the proclamation.
Second. We have motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And here to accept the proclamation is Denise Sherman, Executive Director of the Kansas African-American Museum. And would you please introduce your guests?
Yes, and thank you very much for having us this morning. I have with me Mr. Holloway, who is representing Holy Savior Catholic Academy, his two sons, CJ and Kayden, and mother, grandmother is with us as well. And we are excited to launch this program on Saturday, August 24th, and you're all invited. It is open to the public from 9:00 to noon. The program will start at 9:30 and end promptly around 10:30. But we are excited to have this partnership with Holy Savior Catholic Academy, because they have been providing cultural awareness and other programming to the community on Saturday through the Umbuntu Saturday, Umbuntu Village Saturday program. And this collaboration will allow us to not only enhance the programming, but to raise the awareness within the community. And I have Mr. Holloway, who is from Holy Savior, and he would like to speak a little bit more about the Saturday School and give you a little bit more history behind that.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Courtney Holloway. My apologies, I was not prepared to do this. Dr. Shopshire, the President of Holy Savior contacted me on yesterday and asked if I would be here on her behalf. Her plane got delayed, she had a brother that passed away in Baltimore, and so her plane was delayed. So, my apologies for not being fully prepared, but as Ms. Sherman said, my sons CJ and Kayden, they do attend Holy Savior Catholic Academy, and they have participated in Umbuntu Village Saturday School. They participate in the robotics program. It gets started late October, early November, and they practice every Saturday morning to prepare for a competition that's held on the Wichita State campus. My son Kayden also participates in the Umbuntu Village Praise Dance. They also, while they're there, have an opportunity to have help with homework or any tutoring assistance, and they learn about African heritage and things like that while they're there as well. So, it is an excellent program. And again, my apologies, I'm not exactly sure what I should be saying, so if the boys want to... Ms. Sherman, did you want the boys to talk about their...
Oh, absolutely. You did an excellent job.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to share anything with your experience? You're most welcome to.
Please do.
You got this.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And we're not mean, so...
My name is CJ. I'm in eighth grade. I've been going to Holy Savior since pre-K, and they started Umbuntu Village around, I think when I was in third or fourth grade, and like, they wanted to give us the opportunity to have homework and different activities to do after school. So, we started going there, and they started where we would learn about African-American culture and just different other activities to do after school, instead of going home early or going to send a day across the way. So, we do that, and we have, we are in the robotics program, and we do that, and...
Do you want to speak?
Good morning.
That's okay, just say hello.
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 Today is their first day of school, so this is quite an honor for them to come and represent not only their school, but the program, and then be a part of the Kansas African-American Museum. So, we again invite you to join us on Saturday, if you can, and then the... And then, the program will follow the school year for the nine-month program. They will meet one Saturday a month at the Kansas African-American Museum. And then, the other three weeks, the Saturday School meets at the new Holy Savior Catholic Academy location, which was dedicated this past Sunday. And it's very exciting that we're a part of this community effort.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you. CJ, have a question. CJ?
Oh, yes.
So, it was just referenced, the new school was at the groundbreaking and the tour. How is the new school?
Oh, it's good. It's pretty... It's bigger than our other school, yeah.
Totally bigger.
They have like, in every classroom, we have like a touch... A 3D... No, a touchscreen. So, instead of using a whiteboard, so they can use that in the classroom.
Good. I'm so excited for that campus. It's changed totally. And then, so, you've been in the robotics competition at WSU?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, I've attended that the last few years, and it's pretty impressive.
Yes, I have.
So, how did you do?
I think last... Or two years ago, we took fourth.
Oh, all right.
And a couple of years before, I gained, and they had got first place back-to-back.
Wow.
Very good. All right, well, tell Father Billinger hi for me.
Okay, I will.
Okay, all right.
Well, thank you all very much for being here. Father Billinger was my priest when I first moved to town. Tell him you moved across town. He's still one of my favorite priests, so tell him I said hello for me.
Yes, and again, on behalf of Dr. Villia Shropshire, we do want to thank you for the proclamation today.
Thank you. We appreciate you all being here, and thanks for everything you do. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item E. Resolution nominating Ron Ryan for consideration of reappointment to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoun, Interim County Counselor. Items E and F can actually be taken together. These are two reappointments to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board. The county has five appointments to this board, actually five nominations to this board, and these appointments are made by the City Council. Item E is Commissioner Meitzner's recommendation of Ron Ryan to be on this board. Item F is Commissioner Howell's nomination of David Esslinger to be on this board. Both the resolutions are in proper form, and ask that you approve items E and F as they stand.
Very good. I'll go to Commissioner Meitzner, and then I'll go to Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, thank you. I'm honored, really, to have Ron Ryan serve as my appointee. He actually chairs the board there at the Airport Authority. And they've gone through some incredibly positive issues. Obviously, opening the new air terminal has been a wild success, better than what many of us hoped. And then, they've had some other expansion things and other things. And so, Ron's leadership and his history in aviation, from Ryan Aviation to what he does today, is truly appreciated. And Ron's a great leader, and I'm glad that... An honor to reappoint him. This is a rather important board. Some boards are not as important as others, but this one has a vast impact, both positive or negative, if that board is not doing what they're supposed to do. So, I'm honored to make a motion to accept both of these.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to second the motion to adopt the resolutions appointing Ron Ryan and David Esslinger. I would like to say, I think Ron's a tremendous person. Obviously, we know his aviation background. He's an excellent choice for that board, and I think he's done a tremendous job in the past. And so, I'm glad to see his name on this. But I would like to point out, David Esslinger is here this morning, and I worked with David at Boeing in Flight Test for quite a long time, nearly a decade. And he's a very, very smart man. He lives and breathes airplanes kind of like I do, and I really appreciate his love for airplanes. And so, he's also a very excellent choice, I think, for this board, and he's served with honor. He loves this board and does a great job there, so I'm pleased to make the second to this motion this morning. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And we do have our clerk here. Do we have anyone swear in?
Yeah, he's right here.
Nope.
Yep.
Please step up to the podium. We're going to swear again, sir.
There you go.
All right. Just raise your right hand, and just... I solemnly swear I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge duties of the Office of Wichita Airport Advisory Board. I'm the God. All right.
I consider this quite a personal honor to myself. I had a 40-year career at Boeing, and another four or five years at a couple of other companies after retirement. And I've been a dock volunteer since 2004. And when we get finished this, I have a meeting at 11 o'clock to see what's going to happen the rest of the year. So, Jim, I appreciate your appointment. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service. I should have mentioned, I was remiss, I should have mentioned that he spent, I don't know how many thousands of hours, apparently, but a very long time working on the Dock B-29. It was a big passion of his, and he's very committed to that as well. So, thank you for your service to the community on this board, as well as the dock program.
Okay. We have an excellent new home out at the airport. It's beyond belief of any of the people that worked on it, in particular Tony Masolini, who was the father of the whole thing. And he fought for years to get a title to an airplane. And we bounced around at various facilities at Boeing and Spirit. And we finally have an excellent home, and I would invite all of you to come out and see our facility. It's a working museum. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you being here, and appreciate your service.
Pardon?
Hey. Next item, please.
Item G. Resolution appointing Haley Cotler to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun?
Mike Papoun, Interim County Counselor. This, Item G, is a resolution appointing Haley Cotler to Commissioner Cruz's appointment to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. Each Commissioner for this board has two appointments, and this is one of Commissioner Cruz's appointment, replacing Monica Manis, I think.
Monica Marx.
Yeah, just recently resigned. Anyway, resolution's proper form, and we'd ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Haley wasn't able to be here today, but I'm excited that she's serving on this board. She actively takes care of her donkey, which is kind of cool. You guys should follow her on Facebook, because they're kind of funny pictures. And anyway, she's just very caring, and she's very excited to serve on this. She couldn't be here today because she is actively working with Kansas Appleseed to make sure that children have food. So, I make a motion that we adopt the resolution appointing Haley to the Animal Care Advisory Board.
Second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item H. Resolution appointing Tom Higer to the Sedgwick County Third District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun?
Mike Papoun, Interim County Counselor. This is the Chairman's recommendation for an appointment to his Citizens Advisory Board. He is recommending the appointment of Tom Higer. Resolution's proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that Tom has volunteered to serve on my Citizens Advisory Board. I've communicated with him on several issues over the past several months. We had an opening on the Citizens Advisory Board, and he volunteered to serve on that board. I sincerely appreciate that. I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And I'm not sure he was able to be here today. Thank you. Mr. Arnold, we appreciate it. Next item, please.
New business. Off-agenda item.
Thank you. We do have one off-agenda item this morning to talk about a grant that's very important that we get moved through, so I move that we add an off-agenda item at this time to consider a grant for internet crimes against children.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Well, good afternoon... Or good morning, Colonel Powell. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission. We've brought before you this morning, for your consideration, a grant renewal in the amount of $394,000... Excuse me. $394,252 for the continuation of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force is funded by the United States Department of Justice, the Office of Juvenile Justice, and Delinquency Prevention. This is... Those of you that have had prior history on the bench years before will recall, this is an annual grant renewal process that we go through. And this grant helps fund the... Part of the ICAC Internet Crimes Against Children Unit, which is a subset of the EMCU, or Exploited and Missing Children's Unit. We're fortunate this year with the amount being allocated, $394,252. There actually has been a nominal increase in the budgetary authority that they're willing to pass on to us in the grant this year. Last year, the money's received totaled about $247,000. So, there's an increase there substantially of, what, about a... Close to $150,000, with the majority of that being earmarked for advanced technological purposes and equipment. As you'll recall, this is a joint venture between the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, the Wichita Police Department, and the Department of Children's and Families. Our ICAC office here in Kansas is one of 60-some ICAC offices across the United States, and their mission, again, is to fight internet crime against children, while at the same time, they also offer support to some 30-plus ancillary, smaller ICAC units that operate within the state of Kansas. So, we're providing not only investigative tools and personnel for the citizens of Sedgwick County, a half a million or so, but we're also providing that same service for the some 3 million citizens almost across the state of Kansas. I have brought with me this morning Sergeant Jeff Swanson. Sergeant Swanson is the Wichita Police Department Supervisor, a sergeant over the ICAC unit. And we also have Mr. Marty Hughes in the back row, who, of course, is our financial guru, who helped us push all this through, literally, in a matter of two and a half days. So, I pretty much am finished with my part of this, and Sergeant Swanson may have a few comments and would gladly stand for any other questions, as I will, that you may have.
Thank you, Colonel. Morning, Sergeant.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity, on such short notice, to address you. The ICAC grant itself is extremely important, because the way that technology is being used to exploit children. Depending on how familiar you are with computers, you know that a gigabyte is a storage item where materials can be stored. My four forensic investigators, just this year, in 2019, have already processed over 80,000 gigabytes of contraband material. So, that gives you kind of an idea of what the problem is. The imagery that we're seeing and the way that's being transported, a lot of times when people think about explicit images, they're thinking about teenagers taking inappropriate pictures and sending them to each other. The stuff that my people are recovering is infant, toddler, pre-pupescent, and as explicit as you can imagine. The money that we use not only protects children in the state of Kansas, it protects children internationally. We've recovered children in Canada. We've gotten information from other parts of the world about children that were exploited in Kansas, and the communication, the investigations that are being done are possible because of this grant. This year, during this grant cycle, we've identified 44 children who are previously unknown victims, based upon our investigations. And those are kids that are now receiving services and are on a path to recovering from the exploitation that's happened. Child pornography is a topic that many people don't want to talk about, but what I would tell you is that it's not a click of the mouse. It's not just an image. It's not just a couple bytes of data. It's actually a crime scene photo. It's a crime that's in progress of a real child that's being exploited. And the people that work for me are extremely dedicated in not only prosecuting the people that are exchanging these images, but identifying who these victims are and getting those victims' services. Your support is extremely important to us. We could not do it without your support, and I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I just have one comment. I serve on the Exploited and Missing Child Unit Board. What you all do every single day, I don't think I could do, honestly. You are looking at things that are horrific, that are happening to our children, but you're finding ways to stop that, and we appreciate what you do every single day. The problem isn't getting better, unfortunately, so we need grants like this so that we can make sure that we do protect our children. And that's one of our major goals in life, is to make sure that we protect our children. So, I know that today, this is short notice, that's why we had to add it as an off-agenda item. And what we're doing is requesting the board to approve us applying for this grant. I think this grant's critical. We've got to keep it going. So, I move that we adopt the resolution to apply for the grant.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you very much for what you do, and thanks for being here today. We appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item I. Consideration of a grant in the amount of $388,020 for the 2019 Edward J. Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, 2019 Public Safety Modernization Program.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tavina Zaw, Management Intern at the County Manager's Office. Today, I'll be presenting to you the 2019 Edward J. Byrne Justice Assistance Grant, also known as the JAG Grant. As many of the Commissioners know, the JAG Grant is the primary provider of federal criminal justice funds to the state and units of local government. The total funding award for 2019 is $388,020. Sedgwick County share is $194,010. The difference from last year to this year is a $12,370 increase of total funds, which equates to $6,185, which is Sedgwick County share. Currently, the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County are classified as desperate jurisdictions. This means that they receive funding in one lump sum, and that sum can be divided up through a memorandum of understanding between the city and the county. The total amount of funding available to both the city and the county is at $388,020 amount, both of which the jurisdictions have decided to split 50/50, making Sedgwick County share that $194,010 amount. Today, in addition to accepting staff's recommendation to accept this grant, we also ask that you conduct a public hearing, accept public comments as required by the grant and the United States Department of Justice.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I have a little bit more. So, I have a few more slides. So, this slide actually outlines the requested amounts from the departments and what the advisory board recommended. The total funds requested in 2019 is $277,359. And for reference, the request back in 2018 was $199,357.85. So, the committee had a lot of hard decisions to make. For the 2019 recommended items, the committee decided to fully fund Priority One request for all departments, and either a full or partial funding, or Priority Two request, for all departments and either a full or partial funding of Priority Two requests, with the exception of the Regional Forensic Science Center, which received a full funding for Priority One, Priority Two, and a partial funding for Priority Three items. The remaining information will cover the specific items funded through the grant. On this slide and others to follow, the number in parentheses represents the number of units that was recommended by the committee, as well as the purpose for each request, followed by the price per unit. At the bottom of the slide, you'll notice the total amounts requested for each department. The Sheriff's Office Priority Number One request aligns with the Sheriff's Office Intelligence Lead Policing Goals. The purpose of this funding is to purchase a technology-based moving license plate reader that will be mounted on a Sheriff's Office Patrol car to assist with the detection and investigations of crimes and criminal element. This will aid in identification and apprehension apprehension of persons and vehicles related to criminal activity. Sheriff's Priority Two is to fund the replacement of worn-out and below standard inmate meal trays that are used for daily meal service for over thirteen hundred inmates that are in the custody of the sheriff. Reducing any safety concerns and the elimination of trays that are no longer a sealed unit, a sealed, a single unit that is sealed will support the prevention of contamination of further damages by inmates. In total, the request by the Sheriff's Office is $30,735, which represents sixteen percent of the total JAG allocated to Sedgwick County. The next office that we have is the Regional Forensic Science Center. For the requests that were made by Dr. Roerig, he had stressed to the Advisory Committee the need for his Priority One, Two, and Three items, which is why the committee ultimately recommended a full funding for Priority One and Priority Two, and a partial funding for Priority Three. Priority Number One is to fund the replacement of two positive pressure manifolds. These are used to extract drugs from biological materials and is also used to support the analysis of evidence in drugs and driving cases in addition to coroner cases. These manifolds are more than ten years old that they currently have and have either missing parts or functions that no longer work. Replacing these will ensure that the Science Center will maintain current analytical capacity. Priority Two is to fund the required upgrade for DNA analysis software to be compatible with Windows 10. Sedgwick County plans to discontinue the networking of Windows 7 machines by 2020 because Microsoft has announced that the support for these machines, particularly these operating systems, will be discontinued in January of 2020. The current version of GMIDX is not compatible with the 64-bit Windows 10 environment workstation that is being installed in the, in the DNA lab concurrently, thus creating the need for a more advanced version of this software. The objective of this request is to acquire, install, and validate the upgraded version of the GMIDX software. The last request is the Priority Three request from the Regional Forensic Science Center, which is used for funding for an upgraded, a required upgrade for the DNA quantitation software. This is similar to the previous slide that I had mentioned in regards to how the current quantification, quantitation instrumentation software operates in a 32-bit Windows 7 environment. This version of quantitation software that's being used is not compatible with a 64-bit Windows 10 workstation that's being involved, that's being installed in the DNA labs in accordance to the county standard. Therefore, it requires a more advanced version of the software. The funding will afford the laboratory hardware and software that allows for quantitation instrumentation to be compliant with the county standard and is essential to the continuity of DNA casework. In total, these requests come to $57,430, which represents thirty percent of the JAG allocated to the county. The next office we have is the District Attorney's Office. Their Priority One funding request is to obtain licensing, configure database setup, convert existing data, purchase hardware and consumables, and import existing data into new software. The current barcode tracking software that is used to track case files was purchased back in 2003, and this product needs to be replaced as it has become unstable and is no longer supported by the vendor or Sedgwick County. Tracking of the case files is a basic need of the office with over thousands of files that are being handled each year. And recently, Sedgwick County contracted with Aptricity for a RFID asset management and tracking software. Aptricity has the ability to read codes or RFID tags, RFID tags, so that will be worked, so that it will work with existing files as well as new files built using RFID technology. RFID scanning is extremely efficient, and it can read files within a certain area without having to scandal, scan individual files. Priority Number Two that was received from the DA's office is to fund and expand the JustWear SAN capacity within the application and database by over forty-two terabytes. JustWear is a cat, case management system that is used by the DA's office, and this purchase will accommodate past and future growth of electronic files related to cases being prosecuted by the office. In total, the request from the DA's office is $36,977.14, which is nineteen percent of the JAG allocated to the county. The Corrections Priority One funding is to purchase, to help purchase drug testing and electronic monitoring systems and services for adult offenders supervised in the community. Moderate to high-risk offenders who have demonstrated the need for increased monitoring in addition to those where a court order will be placed on electronic monitoring. Only offenders that currently abuse drugs and alcohol or have a history of use will be tested as outlined by the agency policy and procedures. Priority Two for the Corrections Department is to increase safety of staff by providing bulletproof vests for field visits that serve adult and juvenile clients. These requests come to a total of $56,705, which is twenty-nine percent of the total JAG allocated to Sedgwick County. We're almost there. In 2018, the courthouse police received JAG funding to replace two of the four metal detectors in the courthouse lobby. The bid came low enough that they were able to replace three out of the four metal detectors in the lobby. With the 2019 request, the courthouse police is seeking funds to replace the final metal detector in the lobby in addition to one at the juvenile courthouse. These metal detectors will work to replace the current equipment that the units, with units that specifically show the area where the metal was detected, and it will allow officers to more quickly respond and more efficiently screen individuals who alarm the metal detectors. Priority Number Two from courthouse police is to purchase tasers. Currently, there are, the police department within the courthouse, excuse me, has thirty-four positions, but only ten taser units. They frequently run into problems in, in terms of equipping all officers that need to carry a taser, both within the courthouse and juvenile courthouse. Therefore, the requests for the courthouse police in total come to $12,162.86, which is six percent of the total JAG. So with this, at this time, it is staff's recommendation that you open the public hearing, accept public comments, and close public hearing in addition to approving the grant application related to the city of Wichita. And lastly, to establish the budget authority until the conclusion of the grant term and allow the remaining balance at the end of the calendar year to be established for the next fiscal year. If you have any questions about the projects, I believe that each department has a representative here today who can answer those questions for you.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions today? I see no questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate the briefing. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing to accept public comments. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Anyone wish to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing at this time, and I move that we take the appropriate action and establish the budget authority.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item please.
Item J, Amendment to the Community Investments Plan Concerning Renewable Energy Policy Statement.
Morning, Mr. Yearout. How are you?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Dave Yearout with the Planning Department. Today, we have two items for you. The first one concerns an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. As a brief background, what started this process was a request from the Board of County Commissioners to staff in January of this year to evaluate really what needed to be done and what we might do for all of Sedgwick County regarding renewable energy. There was a moratorium passed in February of this year to give adequate time to address that issue, to make sure that we had proper rules and regulations and procedures in place. Extensive research was conducted by staff and evaluated with many people throughout the community, and resulted in public hearings before the Planning Commission held in June, on June 6th and June 20th. The moratorium was later extended to November of this year to give adequate time for all this to be completed. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment is adopting policy statements concerning renewable energy. We are proposing a new plan element that will recognize the value of protecting existing rural development patterns within the county and with our small cities, and also maintaining the protections of our aviation facilities and our aviation industry, particularly the airports and landing strips. It supports the idea of prohibiting the large wind energy conversion systems to wind farms, as they are commonly known. But we are talking only the commercial scale facilities, not smaller facilities that might be accessory units. But we will support the idea of having standards for solar, solar energy conversion systems as they might be presented around the county. One of the things that was looked at in evaluating why wind energy was not viable within Sedgwick County was recognition from our research that identified that wind facilities could have impacts up to five miles around airport facilities. This map shows, and the kind of little blue circles are the areas where we have airport, airport facilities scattered around the county. The purple circles that are off the map were at the request of the board to look at how other airports in other counties might reach into Sedgwick County within a five-mile radius. What, the white areas are really the only areas that were left that would potentially even be viable for wind energy facilities without impacting airports, but we also recognize we have a lot of other development and the small cities in those areas. So the result was a recommendation by the Planning Commission in the plan to prohibit wind. As I said, within our code, we still allow wind and solar facilities as accessory units to individual properties. We're not dealing with the commercial scale, but that is the activity that might occur on your, your private property. We'll talk more about that when we talk about the amendment to the regulations. The resolution before you today deals with the Comprehensive Plan first. The Plan Amendment was recommended by the Planning Commission after conclusion of discussions and extensive research on June 20th. It comes to you with the recommendation, eight to four, as I recall, was the vital quote of the Planning Commission, to recommend the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan Policy Statement, and within that, it supports the idea of prohibiting wind and accommodating standards for solar development with the open door in the future as technology changes or other issues evolve that the policies can be revisited, revisited in the future. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. First of all, just a couple of comments real briefly is that I appreciate the time and effort that the Planning Department has put into what we have before us today. We've taken a lot of input from a lot of different folks, as you've seen from the briefing that we've just presented. This is an issue that has some contention, but I think the way that we've gone through it has kind of alleviated the questions that might have arisen based on what we've seen in other counties. So I again appreciate what the Planning Department has done. I appreciate the community that's participated in our, our different forums that we've held, and I do believe we got a question or a comment from Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't really have a question. I just kind of wanted to reiterate, I've learned more about all of this over the past couple of months than I probably ever would have learned before, and so I appreciate the work that was done. I just kind of want to reiterate the fact that we are supporting wind and solar. We are supporting wind and solar. We are just having the big wind energy conversion systems is what we aren't supporting. We are supporting the conversion systems for solar, and we are supporting the wind systems on a small scale. So I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that we are supporting wind and solar. I want to say that again. We are supporting wind and solar. There are just some stipulations in which we aren't. So thank you so much again for your work on this. Thank you to all the staff who have put in time and reading tons of studies. I know that they're quite lengthy, so thank you so much. I have learned a lot, and I would be happy if any of my constituents have any questions about why I'm making a decision to support this, because I think that it's important that we look towards the future. And one question that I did ask, and I'm so glad that you pointed it out, was that we are opening this up for the future. So we understand that the technologies as they sit today is what we have to deal with today, but we are think, forward-thinking and understanding that, that in, technologies may change in the future, and so we are going to leave that open for consideration. So thanks again. I appreciate what you've done.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, I know it's more in the next presentation, we're going to talk a little bit about the solar panels, and I do want to just point out that we had a great meeting this morning. I have had some concerns about the, the impact on airports and aircraft, general aviation, McAllen Air Force Base. We had the great opportunity to have personnel from the, from the base here this morning. We had a very good discussion, and with that, I am satisfied that, under the conditional use guidelines and processes, that we have control on, on, on solar rays that would ensure there's not going to be any, any detrimental impact on any aircraft, airport, airstrip-type activities in our county. So with that, I think this is well done, and I'll just say, I am fascinated by the wind turbine generators. I think they have a thing that looks like a propeller, so it's kind of fun to look at. I understand the concerns. I agree with Commissioner Cruz. We do support wind and solar, but aviation in this county is, is so important, so important to the community, that I think this is a good balance. And with that, I, I'm pleased to support the, the amendments to the Community Investment Plan today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I have already asked earlier in the meeting whether or not there were any public comments, but this is an important issue. I want to make sure that if there is anyone that didn't have an opportunity to speak, that I open it up to the public at this time if there is anyone would like to speak. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the board. Again, as I've already stated, I appreciate the time and the effort that's been put into this. It's a two-part thing. We're going to see the first part right now. We're going to then take a look at, we have the Comprehensive Plan, and that's the first part, and then the zoning code is the second part. So we're going to take a look right now at, at the Comprehensive Plan. So I move that we follow MAPC recommendations to approve the proposed amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, and stay up there because Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Item K, Amendments to Sections of the Unified Zoning Code Concerning New Definitions and New Standards and Requirements for Renewable Energy Systems.
Mr. Yearout.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As I started to talk about with the, within the zoning regulations, and particularly with respect to private individual activities that might occur, accessory uses are allowed, and that includes both for wind facilities and solar facilities. An individual could put solar panels on their own home or their outbuildings. They could put a wind facility up to forty-five feet by right, subject to certain setback standards. If there were issues with respect to those standards, a conditional use is always available for someone who might want to put a private facility up on their own property. So that is allowed. We're not banning or prohibiting that activity at all. That is currently allowed, and the only condition is that obviously building permits and code requirements from, from those issues. Within the proposed zoning amendments is a prohibition within the county and city of Wichita for the utility scale facilities only of what's called wind energy conversion systems, or as the lay language is, the wind farms, although they might, had people tell me that we're not farming anything, but they are, they are big. That would be a prohibited activity within the county under the current standard that would be adopted. For solar technology, though, we are adopting a lot of standards. There's very detailed information required on a proposal for a solar facility, particularly name the technology that is being used. We're putting concerns or limitations within one mile of all of our airport and landing strips that will require full FAA approval before a facility can go in there. A solar glare analysis or hazard analysis is required, and if it is predicted that it will create a glare hazard, there are mitigation requirements. There are other standards within the proposed language regarding how a facility might be developed, height limitations, setback issues, security fencing, limbs on signage, other mitigation issues, concerns about effect they may, they may have just with on other cultural or aesthetic issues within the county, especially, as I said, within one mile of the existing airports. It does require- It does require FAA approval. Because of the discussion we've had over the last few days, and particularly this morning with McConnell Air Force Base, we have language within the current regulations in effect, particularly the airport hazard section of the codes that talks specifically about solar facilities or any kind of a glare activity that might impact all of our airport facilities within the county. So combined with what already exists, coupled with the new amendments that are proposed, we believe we have provided you very adequate tools within our toolbox to address what might happen if a facility is proposed. It will require a conditional use. It will mean public hearings. We're recognizing not only the ruled areas within, we did with the comprehensive plan, but also the importance of our small communities within Sedgwick County and the importance that they have to our future as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yerat. Do we have any questions for staff? Seeing none. Again, this is a critical issue. We've already asked for public comment, but if anyone would like to comment on this issue, I had given them an opportunity at this time. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the board. I don't see any questions or comments. Once again, this is part two, a two-part procedure that we need to go through. This takes care of the zoning requirements, so I move that we follow the MAPC recommendation and approve the proposed amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Yerat. Thanks again to the planning department. This was an awful lot of work and a lot of time and effort we put into this to make sure that we got it right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, Resolution to amend the composition of the Board of Appeals of Plumbers and Gas Fitters.
Chris, are you doing all right?
I am, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, and good morning, Commissioners. Chris Laborm, MABCD for the record, before you today is, excuse me, a resolution to amend the composition of the plumbing board. It's been commonly referred to as expanding the plumbing board since we are increasing the membership there. Formerly called or referred to as the Board of Appeals of Plumbers and Gas Fitters, this board was created in 2013 with the creation of the Unified Building and Trade Code and the creation of MABCD, with a total of seven members. Obviously, this, just like our, several of our other trade boards, has the challenge of representing a very broad and diverse industry. This board has also had a traditionally hard-to-fill or hard-to-retain position of a mechanical engineer. The board has, more so than our others, struggled to find a balance within their industry and within their board. We do see a lot of division in the plumbing world, a lot of that between the use of the International Plumbing Code versus the Uniform Plumbing Code that we use. We use both of those codes, of course, in the county. Current structure of the board consists of two master plumbers, one appointed by each governing body, journeyman plumber, mechanical contractor, mechanical engineer, as mentioned, a master lawn, irrigation, and public at large, and you can see the governing bodies which appoint each of those positions. They are currently listed, just as you see them here, also very generically, in that we don't specify beyond just a master plumber or a journeyman plumber. That is the way my other trades boards' positions are currently constituted as well. Some simple math there, you see that the plumbing board only has three of seven members who are actually plumbers. So this has been a point of discussion and a great deal of the determination that goes into this. I'll discuss it a little bit later, but we did look at this as staff, whether we should combine, for example, the mechanical contractor and the engineering position to create another plumbing position. We had looked at those several of those options, but we are landing on the proposed board structure, as you see here, which, and these do add some additional definition to the positions and set a little bit of a new precedence for us there. So this would be one mechanical contractor whose experience and training is specific to, but not limited to, mechanical contracting; one master plumber whose experience and training is specific to, but not limited to, new residential plumbing; one master lawn sprinkler whose experience and training is specific to, but not limited to, lawn sprinkler systems; one master plumber whose experience and training is specific to, but not limited to, service and repair plumbing; one licensed professional engineer whose experience and training is specific to, but not limited to, the design of mechanical systems; one master plumber whose experience and training is specific to, but not limited to, industrial and commercial plumbing. So let me emphasize industrial and commercial plumbing on that; one master plumber whose primary profession involves the installation of plumbing and plumbing systems; one journeyman plumber whose primary profession involves the installation of plumbing and plumbing systems, and one public at large member appointed jointly. And then again, the slide showed the governing bodies that would appoint those. As I alluded to a few slides ago, this has been somewhat of a long time in coming. The concepts here apply, though maybe not as pointedly to the other boards as to plumbing, but this does apply across all of our boards. We, so in looking at this, we looked at the need to potentially expand the definitions of positions there and/or adjust. At this point, the other boards have asked that we leave them as they are, as they have been able to strike that balance, and the coverage, if you will, within their industry, they feel across their boards. As we explored this as well, there was concern by myself and staff, as well as legal counsel, about adding to the definitions of board members. We do see the potential there. Again, if two board members were to disagree on something, are we now going to be looking at, you know, looking at how many permits one's pulling in a certain area versus others, kind of evaluating their qualifications? So we did take a long look at that, as initially, when this began, it began with a proposal to add a lot of more specific definition to the existing positions. So through all of that, there was a great deal of stakeholder involvement, a little bit of alphabet soup on the slide there, but the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, local representatives, of course, the local 441 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and the Plumbing, Heating, Cooling Contractors of Kansas, all had representatives who were involved in this. They were very involved in creating what you see in front of you, or the primary creators, I guess I should say of that, and all fully support that. The PAC was involved with this. They have pledged their support with some reservation. That reservation is based on the fact that they do not feel they were involved to the level that they could have been and should have been. They do have expressed the same concerns that we have as staff with the definitions of those positions. They also end concern with the industry relevance of some of those, and they do feel, they do feel that they were somewhat dismissed with some of their recommendations and proposals by the other organization representatives. We also have, of course, discussed this with WABA, Mr. Gallion, and the industry board. WABA does not fully support this. They do not see it as required or necessary. They also have the hesitation over the definitions, and Mr. Gallion is not here today. He also did not come to the city council meeting, asked me to go ahead and just please state that, that they will support staff and will support the need to move forward with this and to try this. They just are greatly asking for support in seeking, striking that balance and finding the right mix of board members so that we can, again, move forward a little better in the plumbing industry. So at the end of all of that, staff evaluation and the industry support, we are recommending support and approval of this. There's a state statute that requires plumbing boards to be established via charter ordinance. Therefore, we took this to the city council first, same basic presentation given to them. That was a repeal and replace of Section 1 of Charter Ordinance 219, very similar to our repeal and replace of the section of the UBTC that creates the plumbing board in resolution form here. That did receive, oh, important to note that based on both the ordinance and the resolution, this will terminate the current plumbing board, and we will require new appointments to all positions. Did receive unanimous approval at the August 6 council meeting based on the Charter Ordinance rules. It'll be effective 61 days after that final publication, which you will put it at about this time in October, that we will have everything published, and so we'll be looking at late October to reappoint a plumbing board. Gives us that amount of time to work those. We're also recommending, based on that, that we do not appoint plumbing board members at this time, that we just do that with the new board. Very pleased to announce that through all of this, we have a mechanical engineer who has applied to be on the board. We're very excited about that. He's a great, great young man with good experience. So again, at the end of all of that, it is my recommendation, staff's, and as you saw earlier with the stakeholders' recommendation, that we approve the resolution and expand the plumbing board as defined. I'll gladly stand for questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Chris, clarifying, so the terms that end, everybody on the board is, their terms end?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Not just the cities, but everybody's?
Correct.
And then, obviously, they can be reappointed?
Correct.
Is the theory, I guess?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is an important issue. I think Lonnie wants to speak, so I'm going to open it up to the public and give the public an opportunity to speak. Morning, Lonnie. State your name for the record.
Good morning. Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu, and I've been regularly attending plumbing boards for 26 years, the first one. I would like to clarify, you know, this proposal came from the Mechanical Trade Advisory Council when there were concerns, and they spent quite a bit of time. You know, with the PAC, we had 10 meetings, had almost 40 hours involved. The PAC voted three times to endorse the proposal. At our last plumbing board meeting, Director Laborm tried to get the PAC to change their support. They wouldn't do it, but then, over the weekend, without having a meeting, it came up that they had some reservations. So I just want to represent, before I think people say they haven't been heard, and I think in this case, there has been a lot of engagement in hearing. So I do support the expansion. I think that helps us deal with the trade and the different issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lonnie. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the board. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am curious, the advisory board itself did vote on this, I assume?
Oh, yes, that is correct, Commissioner. So there were a few different votes. They voted a few times. Bottom line, the last vote had six members present, and they voted four to two in favor.
Has it always been split like that, pretty much?
Yes. Interesting, because some of the votes were based on eliminating, were not in support based on other things that a board member may have wanted to add, for example, to the proposal.
I'll just make a comment. Thank you for the information. I'll make a comment that I think, I think that the other trade boards do have good diversity represented on those boards, based on the particular trade that they are advising, if you will. The plumbers, in my opinion, is a very broad trade. There's a lot going on in plumbing, and I do think it's difficult to represent the entire industry with seven members. So I have had that concern from the very beginning. I think I started this about two years ago. I made a proposal just to get the ball rolling. I think it was possibly misinterpreted as to what I was trying to do, but I raised the idea that maybe the board ought to have some slightly different positions, you know, considered for this board, probably with a couple of additional people, and I think that the intent there was to have, you know, intentional diversity of the broad spectrum of plumbing, and I think that that was, to this day, I still think that's important. I think that with the limited members of seven members, you really can't quite get there. So I do support the changing of this board. I think it's the right thing to do, but I wish there was more peace amongst the industry already, but I think that just kind of illustrates the point. It's really hard to find any one policy or position that really makes everybody across the entire spectrum happy. I do want to make them happy as possible, so the fact that this was recommended to us, I think I should support this today, but I do appreciate all the work that's been put into this. Initially, I think they were surprised by the idea, but they came around and now they support it, and I think it's been something they've been wanting for about a year, maybe a little longer now, and I think it's the right thing to do today. So I'm glad to support this today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a motion?
I'd be glad to make a motion. We would adopt the, let me get the proper language in front of me here, make a motion we would adopt the resolution that would change the composition of the plumbing board.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item M, Presentation of the InTrust Bank Arena Report.
Warren Lindsey.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Poulousso, your CFO, and today presenting in your capacity as the contract administrator for the contract between the county and SMG. With me today is AJ Beleski, who is the general manager for the InTrust Bank Arena with SMG, and so thanks to AJ for being here. And of course, also want to say a big thank you to Kyle Fielder, management intern in the manager's office, for doing all the hard work and preparing this presentation for you today. And of course, thanks to the team over at the InTrust Bank Arena, Chris Whitney, the assistant general manager and finance director, and Ben Ficus, the accounting manager there, for making sure that we have high-quality information to present to you today. So we are going to talk about the performance of the InTrust Bank Arena through the first half of the year. It's already been pretty exciting, some pretty diverse events, everything from WWE SmackDown, which I'm sure many of you attended, right? And Metallica, Kenny Chesney, a new event called Brunch and Burn, so lots of cool stuff happening at the facility, and lots to look forward to, that AJ will come up for his portion of the presentation and tell you lots more about what all we have to look forward to this year, but also as we roll into our 10-year anniversary year next year, which is very exciting. So as with all prior presentations you've seen, we'll hit on some of the key points. We'll talk briefly, just some reminders about what the SMG agreement says, briefly touch on our agreement with the City of Wichita related to parking, then something I know that's near and dear to all of your hearts, the sales tax reserve fund and its current status, and then finally, like I said, AJ will come up and kind of tell you a little bit more about what you have to look forward to going forward, as well as give you an update on the involvement that SMG has had in our community the first half of this year. So, excuse me, as a reminder, we entered a contract, or entered into a contract with SMG back in 2007. That agreement basically says that SMG is going to operate the facility, even though it's the county's facility. They will promote, operate, and manage the facility in order to ensure the provision of high-quality management services, which results in enhancing the use and enjoyment of the arena. So we know that we have had a number of amendments to that agreement over time. At the end of 2018, you heard our report that basically said SMG had already met its requirements to auto-renew the agreement, and so we're going through those discussions now, and we'll have lots more to talk about on that down the road, just not necessarily prepared to talk about that today. And of course, our agreement with SMG does have a revenue-sharing portion, and it's also fairly unique in the industry because SMG actually bears the risk if there is a year with a loss, so a pretty cool arrangement. So the information we'll talk about today in the semi-annual report will focus on ticket sales, community affairs, and financial information through the first half of the year. So looking at this slide, you can see how many events or performances the facility has had in the first half of the year. We're at 54. Total attendance was at 211,566, with tickets sold of 193,269. Gross ticket sales were just more than 7 million, and so when you take those tickets sold, as applied to the gross ticket sales, you'll see that on average, the cost of the per ticket sold is 36. per ticket sold is $36.40. So this is always, excuse me, some interesting information to see about how the arena has impact on our local community. There are 110 community groups that were able to volunteer in concession stands, and those 110 groups received about $146,000 in revenues from the work that they did there at the facility. Spending with Sedgwick County, Kansas companies is, as you can see, just over 1.8 million, and sales tax paid or remitted up to the state was over $800,000 through the first half of the year. There were six presentations or tours related to the facility, and five local events and activities. So the next slide will show a couple pieces of information, but this, but you can see these definitions. I'll just give you a moment to look at these. They all relate to income, but they're different classifications, and so as you look at the information on the next slide, all of the definitions of what's included in the numbers you'll see relate back to this information. Of course, kind of the bottom line is that net building income. So looking at that next slide, you'll see there were 54, 54 performances through the first half of the year. Nine of those were concerts, 12 were family shows, there were eight sporting events, 19 Thunder Hockey Games, and six Wichita Forest Football Games. And so together, those performances equal that 54 number we just talked about. You can see that in total, the net event income from those events was just more than $2.5 million. When you take in other operating income for the facility of about $950,000, that brings the total gross building income for the first half of the year to $3.5 million. But then, of course, we have to take into account those indirect expenses, so administration and all of those costs that are listed in that asterisk just below the table. And so once that's applied, you see that net building income through the first half of 2019 is $713,000. So continuing to talk about finances, but from a slightly different angle, we'll talk about the arena sales tax reserve. And so of course, this reserve was started with the surplus from the 1 cent 30-month sales tax. Over time, as we have that revenue-sharing agreement with the arena, or if there's capital improvement project money that comes back to the county, those revenues are deposited back into the sales tax reserve, and so that's what makes up the revenue side of this piece. On the expense side, there are certain authorized uses for the way the, way the sales tax reserve can be spent. It's not like it can just go to the County General Fund and help offset our expenses. And so you can see, as we get into the presentation here in a moment, the major repairs or capital equipment for the arena, that top bullet is certainly the most utilized authorized use. If there was a situation where the city, or where the county needed to help pay the city for use of parking lots for the facility, we could use that money from the sales tax reserve to fund that. And then finally, what we all have historically called the Coleman Parking Lot, that parking lot at Second and St. Francis, work to maintain that parking lot can be paid for from the sales tax reserve. So looking at the quarterly balances for the first half of the year, you'll see we started with $8.6 million. That dropped down to about $7.15 million at the beginning of the second quarter, and now at the end of the second quarter, we are to $7.3 million. And we'll go through the details behind that here in just a moment. So on the revenue side, through the first half of the year, the sales tax reserve fund received about $300,000. The biggest portion of that would be the naming rights installment, so again, we have a number of sponsors associated with the facility, and they make annual payments to us. And so that money is then remitted over to SMG to operate the facility, but in this instance, you can see it on the revenue side. So then flipping over to the expenditures, you can see, it says intrinsic value of interior signage, along with banners and ATM signage. Those are, those top two bullets are actually tied back to that naming rights that you saw on that prior slide. That's how we remit that back over to the facility. And then you can see a number of capital improvement projects. There were 20 authorized projects in this year, CIP, and so those costs are allocated to SMG, and then through the provisions in our management agreement, they do the work. And then you can also see the ticket allowances, again, for our sponsors associated with the facility. And so that is a high-level summary of the performance of the arena on a financial side. I'll turn it over to AJ to talk about community events and what we have to look forward to, unless you have any questions I can address.
I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Okay. AJ, it's all yours.
Morning AJ.
Good morning, Commissioners. AJ Beleski, General Manager for InTrust Bank Arena and SMG. Appreciate the time to speak with you guys on our semi-annual report. Community service projects, you will see it, there's a lot of pages, a lot of slides on this piece, as we're talking about the first six months of the year. Flip into the third slide, in February, you will see community involvement and donations, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Kansas, Goodwill. So one thing, just to point out there, that we've started doing, when we have unclaimed lost and found items, you know, I think it's 60, 90 days, somewhere in that neighborhood, we then contact Goodwill and we work with them to get those items to Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So that's another initiative that we've been doing. When you flip to a couple other slides into February 18th, Address for Success this year, this is a, a community involvement. We've been doing this for a few years now. We raised about $304, along with clothing that we donated to that initiative back in February. And then another new item that we started this year in June, our food and beverage folks, Savers, our division of food and beverage, worked with River Fest to host the, in Goodwill again, to hope, to host the Cajun Food Festival. So they prepared all the food for that event this year. That was our first time doing that. We were thrilled to be involved in it. I think it was a success, and, and we hope to be able to do that again, but that was a neat event that we haven't done previously. Also, this time of the year, summer, when our events slow down a little bit, we love to get involved in the community. So Salvation Army, we helped them with our fan distribution. We also helped with Habitat for Humanity, Special Olympics. Those are a few of the things that we've been doing. We helped with Sedgwick County Zoo Ape Awareness. So that was kind of a fun thing. We had about nine full-time staff that went out there and helped for that. And then we also will be helping out with zibley and also participating from a food standpoint for that event coming up. We continue to donate the use of the marquee to one nonprofit per month, and that's a sold-out initiative. We have a waiting list on that, so that's worked out very well. So those are just a few of the updates from a community involvement standpoint. If you guys have any questions, we're always happy to answer those.
Any question for AJ?
Upcoming event-wise, you know, it's a pretty busy August for us. We just finished, we had Alan Jackson and Jim Gaffigan. We hosted the Global Leadership Conference back in August as well, earlier in this month. So, and then it continues on this week. We're super excited tomorrow night, actually, Chris Stapleton. We expect to have more than 10,000 people in the building. Newer Capacity Show should be a great evening. His first time ever at the building, so we're excited about that. And then looking ahead to the rest of the fall, we have Carrie Underwood coming back. Godsmack will be making their first appearance ever at our facility. Guns N' Roses in October will be making their first appearance ever in the city of Wichita, so we're pretty excited. It's always neat when we can bring an act that's never been here before, and especially somebody so iconic as Guns N' Roses. And then one of our hottest-selling tickets right now, we just announced last week, went on sale, Alabama, with very special friends, The Beach Boys. I think this might be one of their first times together ever, and so we are excited to be one of the first. We always like to hear that, that term associated with some of our shows. So that'll be coming up Saturday, November 2nd. The Chainsmokers, which is a kind of a pop show with five seconds of summer, will be here in November. TSO, we just announced, is coming back, so we're happy to have them as part of the Christmas tradition here in Wichita, December 6th. And then looking ahead, so Lindsey talked about it, but we've, you know, it doesn't seem like it, time flies, but next year, 2020, will be our 10-year anniversary for the facility. So we're very excited for this. We actually announced our first anniversary concert show back in, I think we announced it in May. George Strait will be returning this January, so that'll be a big show. And then also, since then, we've announced, we're going to start the party a little early and include Guns N' Roses as part of our anniversary concert series as well, because it's such, such a big name, first time ever in the city, and we're excited to have, have them here too. So those are a few things that are, are coming up. Always more announcements. We'll be kicking off Thunder Hockey here shortly in mid-October, and that kind of completes our presentation today, unless you have any questions.
I don't see any questions right now. We appreciate what you do over there. Couple things coming up. First of all, I did enjoy Alan Jackson very much, so I appreciate you bringing them in. In addition, we have the Quad Counties, Sedgwick County, Butler, Harvey, Reno County, meet every quarter, and InTrust Bank Arena is hosting us for luncheon and a tour for our partners in the surrounding counties, so we appreciate you doing that, too.
You're very welcome. We're happy to host.
Very good. I don't see any other questions. Lindsey, I guess I do have one question. We have one fund called Sales Tax Reserve, but that Sales Tax Reserve really, at a certain point, is not going to be the right term, because we roll all of the money that we make out of the contract back into that. And so it's not really Sales Tax Reserve at a certain point, it's just a reserve fund. Do we need to rename that at some point?
We certainly can. I think we know that will happen here probably within the next 10 years or so, and so I think if it's, if the commission so desires, we can change it at any time. We can just name it either the InTrust Bank Arena Fund or the Downtown Arena Fund. That's very simple for us to execute. So if you would prefer for us to do that, we can do that for our next presentation.
At a certain point, it's not going to be a Sales Tax Reserve.
It's very true.
We appreciate very much that we had a reserve, but at some point, we'll run out of that, and what we're doing now is just rolling all the profits back into that fund. Okay. I don't see any other questions, so I move that we receive and file.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item N, Presentation of the Quarterly Financial Report.
Morning again, Lindsey.
Hello again, Commissioners. Lindsey Proussault, CFO. So we are here to present on the second quarterly financial report this morning. You'll see, first of all, that already the format looks a little different, so our thanks to Tony Giuliano for making that a little more exciting, as exciting as a financial report can be, right? We are also going to have a little bit of a different format today, so thankfully, Lorian Showalter-Ary, the Budget Director, and Hope Hernandez, your Accounting Director, have agreed to help shoulder this presentation with you today, so we'll kind of be cycling through to present this information to you. And so my sincerest thanks to them for offering to do that. And definitely a huge thank you to the Accounting and Budget teams for putting this information together, and if you'll bear with me for just a moment, I want to say thank you to these folks. In Budget, in addition to Lorian, that includes Carly Sanchez, Lee McCray, and Andrew Walker. And then in Accounting, that includes in addition to Hope, Brandy Bailey, Mandy Estes, Melissa Slaughter, and Marty Hughes. And I would just tell you that after nearly 41 years, this is the last quarterly presentation that Marty Hughes has to sit through before he retires next month. So an awful lot of dedicated service, lots of years. You'll recognize him at the employee recognition ceremony, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank him for his service. So getting to the report itself, a reminder that this information is not audited yet. This is just what we're showing through the first half of the year. We are going to stay at a pretty high level, because last week, you actually received your July monthly financial report. So we'll try and move through this fairly quickly, though we're more than happy to answer any questions you might have. The document looks like this and has been delivered to you already. It will be posted on the website later today. And again, a great job to our teams for putting that information together. So with that, I will turn it over to Lorian to kick things off for us.
Morning, Lorian.
Good morning. Lorian Showalter-Ary, Budget Director. This slide shows the projected year-end results for all funds. It shows the estimated revenues and expenditures, the net change in fund balance, and the estimated ending fund balance. On the net change in fund balance line, you can see that for the General Fund and the Fire District, we are projecting surpluses at the end of 2019. And for the other funds, that negative net change in fund balance is due to strategic drawdowns of fund balance. So these first few slides are going to show information on county property tax-supported funds. And here you can see a comparison of second-quarter revenues since 2015. The increase in 2019 is largely due to increased assessed valuation, which is 3.9% for 2019. This slide shows the second-quarter expenditures for each year. As you can see, they are pretty close to the second quarters of 2018 and 2019. This chart shows the top 10 revenues on a budgetary basis for the second quarter. The biggest increase is in investment income, which Hope will be talking about in more detail later on in the presentation. The other large increase was in administrative reimbursements, and this is because of the increase in admin charges for the 2019 budget, which is mainly in Public Works and Comcare. The largest decreases were seen in insurance fees and Medicare fees. These are collected primarily for the operation of EMS, and the decrease is due to the transition to an outsourced billing model at the beginning of the year. However, in May, we did see a record number of collections, and we've seen numbers nearly as high in June and July as well, and we do believe that we will meet our estimated collections of about $15.4 million for the year. Personnel is the largest expenditure in the county, and this chart highlights the key personnel expenditures for the second quarter. Overall, there's a 3.8% increase from the second quarter of 2018 to the second quarter of 2019, with the largest single increase seen in overtime, and this is mainly in the Sheriff's Office, and is due to those vacancies in the jail, as well as sheriff's deputies that are covering some of those shifts. The increase in all other personnel expenditures is largely due to the one-time bonus payments made this year. And here are some key non-personnel expenditures. You can see there are two large increases, the first in grant awards, and this is mainly due to that $2 million Phase 1 payment to the zoo funding, and the other is for medical professional services, incorrections, and the Sheriff's Office. The largest decrease was in interest on debt. However, due to the extraordinary bond redemption that will happen this year, these costs will increase later in the year, but overall, this will save us on interest costs over the long term. So the next few slides show information on the Fire District General Fund, starting with the second-quarter revenues. And like the county, these increases are largely due to increased assessed valuation. For the second-quarter expenditures, there is an increase for 2019, and this is mainly because of the transfer for the remodeling of Fire Station 31 in Andale. And here are some key activities in the Fire District. This is revenues and expenditures. The largest increase is in transfer out. Again, that's because of the station remodel and the increase in pension contributions, and this is due to the increase in KPNF rates this year. The largest decrease was in capital outlay, and capital outlay in the Fire District is where they purchase their cash-funded vehicles, the staff squad, and brush trucks, and there were fewer of these purchases the second quarter of 2019 versus 2018. And that's the end of my slide, so I'm going to hand it over to Hope.
Morning, Hope.
Good morning. Hope Hernandez, Accounting Director. We will now look at the county's non-property tax-supported funds. The county has 35 of these operating funds that are not directly supported by property tax dollars, including federal and state grant funds. As shown on the chart here, revenues in the second quarter of 2019 were $36.5 million compared to revenues in the second quarter of 2018 that were $35.8 million, so a small increase of about $700,000. Expenditures for the county's 35 non-property tax funds totaled $38.7 million in the second quarter of 2019 compared to expenditures of $37.6 million in the second quarter of 2018. This is a difference of approximately $1 million, and that is due to the use of shopping carts that are converted into POs that we're using that are encumbering the entire year's amount of budget authority towards the beginning of the year. Here we show the top 10 revenues on a budgetary basis for the non-property tax-supported funds. The largest decrease here of 23.6% is in the State Revenue Corrections Fund, which is due to the timing of receiving grant funds from the state. We just received Q4 2018 funds in April of this year for both funds in April of this year for both the reinvestment grant and the regional collaboration grant. So it's an actual timing issue up here when we're reflecting when we receive those dollars. The largest increase of the 21.7% is in the substation fees, and that is just due to the increase in tag fees. The key expenditures here, the top 10, on a budgetary basis, the largest increase of 36.1% is in the Management Services, and that is due to the Environmental Resources/Solid Waste Fund, largely due to the new tire roundup event and the debris removal at Deer Lake Estates. The largest decrease, shown here, of 24% in the Software and Hardware Maintenance, that is found in the Emergency Communications 911 Fund, and that was a large expenditure that we had in 2018 for the next-generation 911 software that's not reflected in the 2019. Now we will move away from the budgetary statements and dive into the accounting part of the quarterly report that is reported on a GAAP basis. This chart illustrates six years of historical trends of total fund balances on a GAAP basis. What the swings in this chart illustrate is the tax collection cycle. So the spikes in this chart show where we actually received the revenue, and then the dips in the chart show where we were drawing down or actually using those funds. This is the same data on this slide as it was on the previous slide, but it illustrates the unrestricted balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures. This line on the very bottom here, it shows us what the county policy states as our unrestricted general fund balance has to be at least 20% of budgeted expenditures. And as you can see on this chart here, the 57% in red, we are well above that 20% threshold. And moving into our last slide, this is our Investment Portfolio slide. The county closed the second quarter of 2019 with a total portfolio of 276.6 million. Investment income received to date at the end of the second quarter was $2.7 million compared to $1.5 million at the end of the second quarter of 2018. This large increase is contributed to the fact that in 2018, the county sold some lower-yielding investments that were locked up for two to three years. We then reinvested those funds into higher-yielding investments, which in turn has increased the amount of the interest income that we are receiving. Our current yield at the end of this quarter was 1.85% compared to 1.31% in the second quarter of 2018. Our benchmark was 2.12%. And at this time, I wanted to recognize Brandy Bailey. She is the one who manages our investment income and our investment portfolio, and she has done a great job with that. So I wanted to give her a shout out for that. And now with that, I will turn it over to Lindsay, and she will talk about capital projects.
All right, Commissioners. So you just heard about the operating funds. Now we're going to spend a moment talking about capital projects. So your quarterly report does actually include a long list of all the capital projects that are open, but we choose to highlight a few when we do our quarterly presentations to you. So the first one to highlight, of course, we all see and definitely hear, the work happening over at the adult detention facility to expand out the first floor and remodel that first-floor space to accommodate sheriff staff who are currently housed in this building on the second and third floors. And as you can see, we project that that will be completed in February of 2020. We do still plan to issue bonds for that later this year based on the projected costs that we expect. So we'll have quite a bit more discussion about that as we move into kind of the end of the third quarter, beginning of the fourth quarter this year. Then looking at security cameras upgrades and standardization, we talked quite a bit about that also at the beginning of this year. We do know that we have a lot of cameras that need to be updated. We also have some spots where cameras need to actually be added. We'll also add some motion sensors. And so that work is being done now. And the work down here on kind of the downtown campus should be completed around October of this year. Next, of course, is replacement of Fire Station 31. You already heard a discussion about that with the transfer earlier this year. It'll also be on your bid board item for the Fire District later today, the design of that facility. And the hope is for that project to go out to bid in November of 19. And then the last two are actually a pair of bridge projects that were, construction started in October of last year and actually was completed in May of this year. So nice to be able to tell you about some stuff that's completed, too. So shifting away from the county's finances specifically, we know Commissioners like to hear about some of the key metrics. And so you can always compare yourself against yourself over time and then compare yourself against peers. And so we'll look at both of those benchmarks in the next couple of slides. So this slide, of course, shows our metrics. This is the same as what you saw in the first quarter. And so while we do have an equal number of green arrows and red arrows, what jumped out to me on this slide is a comparison of 2014 values to 2018 values. So we're now 10 years out from the start of the Great Recession. We know that this has been a very long recovery. It hasn't been quite as rapid as what we've seen in the past. And so it's interesting to me that we still continue to see such positive growth in these values over the last five years, at least in five of these six indicators. So then, moving to benchmarking against our peers, these are some of the other large Kansas counties. Through the first quarter, we didn't yet have their completed comprehensive annual financial reports. And so this information is actually new compared to what you saw last time. So you can see that there are a number of metrics here that look at debt. They look at cash on hand in terms of liquidity, also how much you have available to actually spend, so your flexibility standards, and then property tax rates, property tax reliance. And so what you can see is that generally, the county fares pretty well, Cedric County fares pretty well against its peers. We tend to be toward the middle of the pack. When you take out Johnson County, we tend to be a leader. And regardless, if you look at liquidity, this is a really great measure for us. It basically takes how much our average daily expenditures are and puts that in terms of how much cash we have in the bank essentially at the end of the year. And so when you look at the end of 2018, the county had 135 days. And this right here is a big reason why we get such strong scores on our credit rating reports. And of course, we'll be going through that process again here as we talk about issuing bonds later this year. But certainly something for the county to be proud of. So as we wrap this up, the key points, kind of the takeaways from today's presentation. Certainly, Cedric County is in sound financial condition. That's not news to you. You just went through a long and involved budget process, but it's always good to see the metrics on the page. We do continue to see revenue growth, slow and stable, except for our mortgage registration fee. This is the first full year that we are experiencing the phase out of that fee. And it does appear at this point that the projections of around $3.5 million of lost revenue per year are looking pretty accurate. We'll report on that still as we go through the year. And as you heard during your budget process, while revenues do continue to go up, we know our costs of doing business also continue to go up, sometimes at a rate much greater than inflation. And so we're certainly seeing that with a lot of our technology needs. As our systems get older, our computers get older, CAD, record management systems, all of those things. So those will continue to be issues that this commission needs to wrangle with. And of course, at the end of the day, we recognize Finance as a support organization. And so we look forward to presenting to you again in the third quarter and starting to work on those strategic plan initiatives. So we're happy to answer any questions. If you don't have any, I would recommend you receive and file.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Just a quick one. Just listening to all the presentation. So did I catch this learning for me? So we get our refund on corrections, whatever that slide was. Does it always come in a year and a half late, or whatever it is?
No. And those were new grants. And so, I don't know, Marty, do you want to speak to that? I will give you the opportunity.
It's on state revenue on your slide number 16, state revenue corrections. Did you say that it comes in, we just received some payment from 18?
Yeah, what happened, Commissioner Marty Hughes with Finance. What happened was, this is a new grant a year ago, December, a year ago last December. So in 2018, we received a large, a large payment, you know, the regular payment for the grant. But we had carryover funds because we got the program started late, so we didn't really draw down all the funds from the prior year. So in this quarter, in 2019, it was a lot less, you know, we didn't draw down nearly as much because we, you know, had carryover funds available. So I think that.
Okay, so they normally then pay on time?
Yeah, they pay on time. In fact, they pay in advance.
Oh, they do?
Yeah. And so we basically had carryover funds, so.
Okay, thanks for explaining. And then I always love when we have these presentations. Always, their favorite word is timing. There's always, accountants always use the word "timing issues" on these things. But I know, it's part of the vocabulary. It's vocabulary. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, and your staff always does a wonderful job. So thank you, for those of you that presented this morning, and really all your staff, even behind the scenes, they do a great job. I have a couple of questions. On slide number 20, I'm curious, just want to make sure I understand the yield number. That is a quarterly number. Do we have that by the year? Is there a way to convert that to a yearly performance?
Absolutely. We can get that information.
I'd like to see that, perhaps. I think it'd be good to know because it's hard to mentally understand what 2.7% is or 1.5% is when it's really very dynamic. So I am curious, what are we using for benchmark? Where does that number come from?
Brandy. We'll just invite folks up. I'm sorry, I don't have that information for you.
Brandy Bailey, Principal Accountant. The benchmark is the one-year treasury bill.
Okay. I am, I'm interested, there's been some discussion in the news about potential recession coming up. I'm curious about if we have data going back to, say, 2008, how this performed through the 2008 recession. I'd like to know, are we in the same fiscal position we were back then, perhaps? Should we expect some risk that maybe we haven't talked about lately, if that was to happen? I do know from the state's perspective that I'd say they lost their shirt, so to speak, on their investments. They did not do well on their CAPRIS fund especially. I think it really suffered greatly. The loss was huge, I thought, but I think they're still kind of trying to get that back where it needs to be. And it suffered, suffered pretty greatly during that time. So I'd just like to know if we have data going back to '08, perhaps, how did we do back then, and how are we set up now compared to then?
Yeah, we can definitely get the data going back to 2008. I do have that. And then the state statute restricts on what we can invest in. And each year, we have to go through a thorough review with the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool to extend us out. We're only allowed to go out to four years, where some counties can only go out to two years. So, but I can get you that information.
That'd be good to see that. Thank you very much. And then I do happen to see that the revenue received is quite a bit higher than the six-year trend line on slide 18. Is that something that we should expect to kind of return back to normal, or is that money that we think that that's going to just, on slide 18, is that money going to stay, has our line shifted upward at the bottom end as well, we think, or is that, I'm just curious, what we expect going forward on that?
So this is the general fund, fund balance. And so it does depend somewhat on investment income, but it also will depend significantly on the budgetary decisions that Commissioners make. And so as we went into 2020 budget deliberations, we had talked about it was potentially acceptable to draw down cash in the general fund based on the zoo payments over three years. And so if that is something that the commission elects to do in the third year installment of this in 2021, then yes, that certainly could go down. Also, to your point about the recession, certainly as that starts to get felt, if there is a recession and it starts to get felt in Cedric County, that typically has a little bit of a delay, but that definitely would impact our revenues. We saw it in sales and use tax, and we saw it in motor vehicle taxes especially. And then, of course, it would probably impact our assessed value eventually.
It might be a good topic for a staff meeting at some point in our future. Maybe not right away, but something we ought to be thinking about. And finally, my last question would be on slide number 23. You show some benchmark comparisons with other counties. I happen to notice you're using a number 277 debt, $277 million in, I'm sorry, dollars. That's dollars. That helps me very, I just now read it differently. Thank you so much. That's debt per capita, it's $277. Is that, that's just county debt only?
That is the county's direct debt, so that includes leases, PBC, and our general obligation debt, and then puts that on a per capita basis.
And that's, okay. Yeah, I think that's tremendous that we're that low. That's very good. Thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. I just have a question on slide six and 12, and it's the same question. When you take a look at slide six and 12, it has motor vehicle tax. And I don't have a problem with what you've got up there. What I've got a problem with is the number of tags running around Cedric County that say Texas or Oklahoma on them. So what we're doing is that those of us that are law binding and have Cedric County plates on our tag, on our vehicles, are subsidizing people that are running around Cedric County with Texas and Oklahoma plates on their tags. So in the future, I'd like our staff to take a look at what we need to do to make sure that people are, when they move to Wichita, or even if there's some that live here and never take their tags off, I can tell you that.
I can speak to that.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
And I just sent a text to Lynda Kazier, our County Treasurer, because there's policies that other counties have implemented. And I know she brought us, and it's been a year or so, but what Arc City and Cali County did, because if we think it's bad here, it's rampant right on the border. And they worked with their Sheriff's Department, the sheriff, and they did enforcement. Let me see, I think Lynda just sent me a text back. But anyway, that's the way to do it. There is an enforcement mechanism that other cities have done.
Very good. Well, I just.
I don't think that'd be something Lindsay's department would do.
No, it just came up because it's on our slide. It's not something that you're going to be able to work out.
Oh, hey, Lynda says she'll come up and address it if you want her to. Do you want her to? Why don't we do it at a staff meeting?
Okay.
Another time, okay?
It's just a concern I've got. All right. I don't see any other questions at this time. Since there are no other questions, move to receive and file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item O., Discussion of Legislative Issues to Forward to the Kansas Association of Counties for Consideration as Part of Their Legislative Policy Statement.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoon, interim county counselor. Give you a little bit of history first. Each year, the Kansas Association of Counties adopts what they call a legislative policy statement, which, similar to our platform, states some of their more important legislative issues. They want to have legislature review before the upcoming session. And what they do then is they send out a request to all the different counties around the state to submit legislative issues that they might want to consider to be on their, their policy statement. There is actually a legislative policy committee that reviews these policy state, or these submissions by different counties of legislative policy statements. And then they recommend to the full, full Kansas Association of Counties Board at the annual conference, which is in Wichita this year, November 12th to the 14th, for final adoption. And so this year, we worked with the county manager's office, in particular Tanya Cole, sent out a request to all different county departments to see what kind of county issues, county issues that different departments might be interested in. Tanya and I sat down, reviewed all the different requests that were made. Many of them were very good issues that were raised, but a lot of them were really impacted more Cedric County and wasn't of statewide concern. And really, the Kansas Association of Counties is looking for issues that affect all the counties if possible, or at least a large block of counties. So, but we did look at our priorities that we had in our last legislative session. And you have in your backup three submissions on their form, legislative request form, for possible legislative issues that we could take to the KAC this year and take up to their Legislative Policy Committee. The first one, we drafted, and I might add that Michael Fessinger and The first one, we drafted, and I might add that Michael Fessinger and Jason Janowski drafted these backup documents and were very helpful on this. The first item we did was basically providing funding for the construction, staffing, and maintenance of the regional mental hospitals, including one in Sedgwick County, to serve Kansans and provide equitable distribution of statewide mental health services. We thought that this was, you know, very closely aligned at one of our top priorities, if not the top priority for Sedgwick County, so we were going to try to see if the KAC wouldn't adopt this as part of their legislative policy statement as well. One staff member who's been ever-present today, Lindsay Poe Rousseau, submitted, it's kind of been her show, in fact, she submitted a number of items. Some we're looking at as to doing, some looking at if we can't do it by home rule or some other means, but she did submit some, a couple of very good issues that we thought we'd bring to you to see if you had any interest in submitting these as well. Both issues dealt with trying to get some relief or exception to the property tax lid. The first one had to do with having an exception for election costs, voting equipment and operating expenses for an election, the election commissioner. And the second one had to do with proposing exemption that would exclude state mandated payments to capers and KPNF. As those of you that have been around Sedgwick County for a while know, the Kansas Association of County, along with, I think, every other county but Sedgwick County, supports actually doing away with the property tax lid. Sedgwick County's taken a more hard-line approach to this, but these two proposals today just talk about just creating a couple of exceptions, and our thinking was, since the Kansas Association of Counties wants to do away with the lid altogether, which is probably politically not very feasible in an election year, we thought maybe we could at least convince them to look at a couple of exceptions. And Lindsay's here to answer any questions. She did quite a bit of work on what impact this would have if we could get these exceptions. I think the one on capers and KPNF, in fact, is about $15 million a year to the county, which would give us money we could be spending on other county projects. And I think the thinking that we had along in these two proposals is, right now, under the tax lid statutes, there is an exception for unfunded mandates from federal or state level if they were after 2015. Now, these proposals have been around for well before 2015, but obviously, the legislature at some point figured that spending that we had very little control of or no control of maybe shouldn't be considered for tax lid purposes. And that's why, that's the argument we would make to the legislature, is we have very little control over the amount of money we're required to put into capers and KPNF, nor are we have a lot of control on how much we can spend on elections, because those are mandated by the state and federal government as well. So just thought I'd bring this up for discussion. We can, you can adopt one, you can adopt all three. They're all ready in a form, ready to submit to the Kansas Association of Counties, which the deadline is this Friday. If there are additional issues want to be brought up, we can have a form prepared before Friday to send up as well. I might add that probably to have much consideration for the committee and the Kansas Association of Counties, it would be nice to have unanimous vote and have our entire commission supportive of something to get much traction up there. They want to, they want to know that there isn't division on our body on an issue. So with that, I'll give it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Papoon. I know that we've discussed these in our two-two-and-ones. First of all, mental health, behavioral health, I should say, is our number-one priority that we've got in this area, so I strongly support that. Also, the legislature has given exemptions in the past for unfunded mandates, and I think the other two items are definitely unfunded mandates, because we have no control whatsoever over what we're funding for these items. So I support all three items that you have recommended today.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. On the KPNF, there is currently an exemption under the tax lid for public safety. KPNF is Kansas police and fire. Why would that not be exempt already?
Lindsay Poe Rousseau, CFO. So you're right, there is the law enforcement exemption, and so that's actually something we have talked about in the last few days, is whether that would qualify as an expense that we can exempt. But this, the intent of the item that I propose would be beyond just the KPNF side, also that caper side for our general folks. And just to get to why that is, so CPI from 2012 through 2018 went up 8.6%, but our capers actually went up 13.6% over that time, and that's just the normal standard in place. So we would want to look at both sides of those components in making that exemption request, or at least as proposed.
First, I guess I was unready for, to receive those numbers. What was 13.6?
13.6 was the percent change in capers rates from 2012 through 18 versus the 8.6% that CPI went up in that same time, which is that inflationary index we're allowed to take advantage of under the property tax lid.
Well, the state didn't change the policy for the percent of contributions by the state or the employer, by the employer, I should say, or the employee. It's been 6% and 8% for a long time. How did that change?
So our, the employer contribution rates actually have changed each year. So in 2012, we had the capers rate that was, let me find it, I'm sorry.
I know there was.
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So 2012, the capers rate was 8.34%. 2013, it was 8.94%. 2014, it was 9.69%. 2015, it was 10.41%. 2016 was 10.18. 2017 dropped to 8.96, and 2018 went up to 9.39. And that was just on the caper side.
Okay. I'd like to learn more about that, I guess, later on, but the caper, so, okay, this is just the employer side? The employee side has been?
The employer contribution.
The employee side has been static, then?
I believe there was one adjustment a few years ago, but I'd want to do some research and get back to you on that. I believe on the KPNF side, though.
Okay. And this, these numbers you give me, this is just for caper side, not the KPNF?
Right. I do have the KPNF rates if you need those.
Okay. Well, I don't need that right now. I think, my opinion is, I think that, well, KPNF's already exempt, I feel like it should be, based on that, so. Have we, have we in the past, before the tax lid was implemented, had we in the past adjusted a mill levy up and down for dynamic things such as a presidential election? So we increased the mill levy a little bit to cover that, and then decreased it after the election was over? Is that something we've done in the past?
I don't know that it was specifically tied to those reasons, but yes, the mill levy rate was dynamic each year. There were increases at one point for a jail project. Those were phased out over budget years after that. But certainly, yes, the mill levy rate did go up and down based on needs. I don't know that I could tie it specifically to elections, though.
Okay. Well, I'm just wondering, I mean, from my perspective, it seems it's kind of unlikely we would have that mindset to adjust the mill levy up and down based on, you know, maybe an odd year, like 2019, we would have a smaller mill levy because it's municipal elections, and then in 2020, we'd be higher because it's presidential, and following year, you go back down again, and the following year, go back up a little bit because it's gubernatorial. If that's what we're saying we would do, I just, I think that's a mindset. I just, I would be surprised we would actually do that. Now, if we're moving money out of the elections over to other things to spend money on, and that's, we're just moving money out of there, and I guess for the purposes of the calculation, the calculation includes CPI for cities annexation, new construction, population growth. I am, if what we're suggesting is we just exempted out the election organization entirely from the calculation, I'm wondering, the result of that, if we're going to adjust the mill levy up and down and not have to do a public vote, I guess I'd be surprised we would actually do that. I understand maybe moving money out of there to other things, potentially being able to increase the mill levy, potentially to backfill revenues that we would generate for other, you know, other was, money we generate now would be moved over to other things outside elections, and we'd have the freedom then to adjust mill levy up to cover the cost of the elections. And that's what you're saying we would do then, potentially?
Not necessarily. That would definitely be something we'd have to talk about through the budget process, and that would be a policy decision for commissioners.
Okay. All right.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I understand what the point of this effort is, but I just don't think we should spend a lot of time on this, because making any changes, as far as I've heard from the legislature, is dead on arrival, especially, it'll be an election year. They're not going to change the tax lid, because according to the Kansas Association Realtors, more than 80% of Kansans support putting a lid on property taxes. I mean, they might not understand the, you know, dynamics of the way it works, but I just feel like there's a lot bigger issues that we could deal with legislatively than something that, according to the legislative leadership, is going to be dead on arrival.
But this isn't changing the tax lid. This is, there are exemptions on what we, and all we're asking for are unfunded mandates to be exemptions.
Okay.
Yeah. I would, I would agree with Chairman's assessment.
I know what you're saying, the dynamics. I'm just saying, what's the political dynamic? It's an election year.
They may not.
The, I just don't know if we should waste a lot of time until, I would encourage you to reach out to, you know, Majority Leader Hawkins and Senate President Wagle and see if they agree or not, before we do a lot of.
But we've got to have this up by Friday.
Yeah, okay.
And this just goes.
Well, anyway, yeah, do what you want. I just, just some thoughts.
We're not asking for a change in the property tax lid. We're asking, there are exemptions in the property tax lid.
There are, there are, for public safety.
And we're asking for, and there are fun, exemptions for unfunded mandates, and these two items are unfunded mandates.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address a couple of the questions that Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Howell mentioned, and of course, those two commissioners, having been in the legislature, very familiar with all of the intricacies of trying to get legislation passed, but we're still very early in this process. The KAC may not even adopt our recommendations, and we're going to certainly look at the legal aspects of whether or not we can include some of the KPNF expenses even prior to taking it up to that committee, because we don't want them wasting time on that issue, because you know as legislators, if somebody brings up the issue, you can do it anyway. Under current law, you'll never get a bill passed, even if it might clarify something. But at this point, we would just want to be able to take this to the legislative committee, let this committee discuss, decide whether these issues are worthy for the entire state, and go forward from there. But be willing to submit whatever this board wants to do.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Meitzner?
And just, this is just our recommendations or our request to the KAC Legislative Committee.
That's correct, Commissioner Meitzner. We will have our own legislative platform, which we will start this process probably in the next month, again, getting departmental feedback and developing our own platform and looking at what issues may be more specific to Sedgwick County and not the state as a whole, so.
And so then, as Commissioner O'Donnell was saying, if there's, if the KAC Legislative Committee feels the same, that, hey, this is kind of a dead-on-arrival type request, then they can have that kind of feedback at that time, probably? Yeah.
And I believe there were some bills last year that looked at trying to modify some of the exceptions under the tax lid and, that may still also be in play, but I, you know, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell that any kind of a bill trying to do away with the essence of the tax lid is dead on arrival, I'm sure, this year. But we're hoping that the argument, or at least the KAC could make the argument, that unfunded mandates should get consideration and give local governments. And some of these issues may affect some of the smaller counties much worse than Sedgwick County. They don't have the kind of revenue that we have from taxation, so.
Any other questions?
I move that we adopt a legislative proposal, authorize the county councillor to submit that to the KAC.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm conflicted here, because I do want to support the mental health one, but the tax lid ones, in my opinion, I would agree that were, we ought to, we ought to, I guess, get deeper exactly how this would be implemented. I'm a little concerned that we haven't, we don't have a detailed, a detail exactly how we would implement this on the last two. So I'm a little concerned about that. I would like to make a substitute motion, we would adopt, or think of it this way, I'd like to maybe split the question, if you want to make a subsequent motion on other items. I think we, my opinion is, take these independently, and with that, I'd like to make a substitute motion, we would adopt the legislative platform recommendation to the KAC for a mental health hospital and mental health services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a substitute motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll on the substitute motion.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the remaining two items.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Howell.
Just, you know, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. It's not that I'm against these two items, I just, I'm not ready to go there yet, and I think the timing needs to be thought out just a little bit. I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell. I think this is DOA, and maybe not the right time. I think we need to have deeper discussions and a better, more thought, more thorough discussion and proposal to the KAC. So I thought that I would support this in the future, I just don't think this is the right time, so I'll be voting no. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Commissioner Meitzner.
So did you mention in your presentation that KAC likes to see unanimous come to them?
Well, I, you know, obviously, if a majority of this board votes to submit all three issues, then we will submit all three issues, but we'll be, we'll be honest with the legislative committee that one was unanimous and two might have been a split vote, so, just so they know.
So you could say that they, from the bench, they're saying that they're supportive, they just want more time and more information?
And the other representative, I mean, the Legislative Policy Committee is made up of a, of a number of groups, not only county commissioners, but, like I said, Sheriff Easter is a representative from the Kansas Sheriff's Association. You'll have somebody from the County Clerk's Association, Kansas County Treasurer's Association. You have a wide variety of people that'll be looking at these issues, and they may take a different approach than what a minority of our commission might take on this issue, and still go forward with it, but.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, just one more comment. Again, this is to the KAC, and there's been, sometimes there's been issues where they've been proponents and we've not been with them on some things in the past, and I do appreciate their lobbyist, their lobbying efforts, but we have our own platform, and if we feel like this is something we ought to, you know, maybe present this next legislative session, I think we can have this conversation the rest of this year, and perhaps put this on our own platform and possibly push this forward as a county, but maybe not through the KAC. Does that mean, doesn't mean we can't have a conversation. I just think, I just think trying to have the KAC do this on our behalf may be, maybe not necessary just yet. I think we ought to go just a little bit slower. So, and I guess my point is this, maybe not today, but doesn't mean it's dead for the year or dead for next session. I think we just need to have the conversation after today, that's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Papoon. I appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item P, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on August 15, 2019.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on August 15, there are two items that we're recommending for your approval. Item number one is the Employee Benefits Decision Support Tool for the Division of Human Resources. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Jelly Vision in the amount of $81,154. That's for a period ending December 31, 2020, and with a two-one-year options to renew thereafter. The second item is the Sliding Axle Trailer for Fleet Management and Public Works. This recommendation is to utilize the Sourcewell Contract, which is 052015TKI, and accept the pricing from Trailer King Industries Incorporated, and this is in the amount of $94,809.10. Try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of both items.
Any questions for bids and contracts? Seeing none, move to approve.
Second.
Motion, that's about three seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of Consent Items Q through AD this morning.
Thank you. Move to approve Quebec through Alpha Delta?
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Anything, Mr. Papoun?
Oh, I'd just mention again, Mr. Chairman, that we have the Carolyn, Senator Carolyn McGinn and the many, many of the committee members from the House Ways and Means Committee and, I mean, Senate Ways and Means and House Appropriation Committees are going to be in Wichita on September 9th, and we're looking at having a evening event with these, these state legislators and County Manager's Office. I know is working on that, but that's, that's about the only other news.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Papoun? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other?
Hey, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to give a shout-out to Interfaith Ministries, which is now Humankind Ministries. I had an opportunity to go to their, their fundraiser. Janet Miller invited me. Thank you to Janet. But I just was really impressed by how many people supported, how much money was raised. I was able to tour yesterday, the campus at Market and between Murdoch and Ninth Street, and I have to say that it's an impressive operation, and I'm just really grateful that we have nonprofits such as Humankind Ministries here in our, here in our community. The other thing I wanted to talk about was, I went to Valley Center yesterday, and I had an opportunity to kind of hang out with Amy, the Chamber Representative. They have some really great things going on in Valley Center. Brent Clark is the new administrator there. We were able to give a 15-year service award to Ann for Ann's Attic. It was just, there, there's just a lot of things going there, and I just kind of wanted to give a shout-out to Valley Center. They have their Fall Festival coming up in September. If you haven't gone, it's, it's growing and, growing each year. So, I'm just, I'm excited to be the representative that represents Valley Center, and I'm just excited to see the things that are going on there. So, that's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have anything they want to speak about? I have about three brief things. First of all, again, Mr. Papoun mentioned that on September 9th, we're going to have dinner for the legislators that evening. That evening is also the evening that my Citizens Advisory Board was scheduled to be held, and I believe Commissioner Cruz is Citizens Advisory Board. Mine is, we're going to get the notice out as being slid until September the 16th. Is that the same night? Where, where is yours going to be?
Mine will be on September the 10th, so it will just be then, on a Tuesday. We're just switching it to the next day.
Very good. So, we want to make sure that everybody knows that the two Citizens Advisory Boards will move one, Commissioner Cruz is one day and mine one week, and we want everyone to be aware of that. We both need to attend, each of us need to attend that legislative dinner that evening. Another item mentioned briefly was that Zubale is coming up on September the 7th. It is a huge fundraiser for the zoo. We want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. There is a friendly rivalry between Tim Kaufman and the manager and I on who gets to sell tickets. All three of us are selling, so if you catch any one of us, please purchase tickets to support Zubale. The final thing is, Commissioner Cruz did mention that she and I attended the annual, 68th Annual Humanitarian Awards Benefit. We learned that night that Interface Ministries is now called Humankind Ministries, which I think is a very appropriate description of what they're doing. But more important than that, that evening, we had several people that are associated with Cedric County that received awards. There was a Leadership Through Action Award that was given out that night, and Greg and Nancy Peters were presented that award. Greg and Nancy, Nancy Peters are firefighters, Cedric County Fire District Number One, and they received leadership for, for some of the things that they do to protect the health of our firefighters, and we want to make sure that we congratulate them. Two other people that were awarded that night were Gerald and Triva Liptke, and they are vital volunteers and support behavioral health, and especially our Crisis Center here in Cedric County. And they have been recognized numerous times for what they do for behavioral health in this area, and we, we want to thank, there were other awardees, but those two groups of awardees, I wanted to make sure that we recognize especially, because they're either employees or they work directly with Cedric County to help us support our mission, and I thank them very, very much. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to mention, since we don't have a meeting, I forgot to mention this, since we don't have a meeting next week, Jim, Commissioner Howell and I are jumping off the building next Thursday, the 29th, so if we, I mean, we might, never mind. Anyway, so come out to the Ambassador Hotel. I think it's 14 stories. We are supporting Project Access, and that should be, are you nervous?
I am.
Me too.
I'll get over.
Are you, are you jumping off or rappelling?
We're rappelling, but.
Push me off.
Ooh, you said it, not me.
Who's, who's in charge of the, make sure the equipment's?
Hopefully, not you. Thank you so much.
We appreciate the Commissioner's support of Project Access. We all support Project Access. It's a great program to help provide medical services to our community. The, I will be on the ground watching them. That's my favorite place to see anything. Anyway, anything else for other today? We have no requirement for an executive session. I see nothing else that comes before the board. I'd like to adjourn the Cedric County Board of County Commissioners meeting at this time, call to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for August 21st, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Meisner?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on the public agenda for Fire District Number One today? Seeing no one, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Special Fire Meeting Minutes of August 5th, 2019.
Thank you. All the commissioners have had an opportunity to review the special meeting minutes for August the 5th and the meeting minutes for August the 7th. I move that we approve both.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?